All right. Good evening, everyone. It is August 11th, 2025 at 5:30 PM. I am Mayor Shelley Carlson. The Morehead City Council welcomes public input on issues listed on the agenda or of general community interest. Time and council permitting, speakers will be limited to three minutes each. If you would like to address the council during the meeting, you'll need to fill out a form provided by the city clerk and we will call you up during the citizens to address the council item on the agenda. You'll need to state your name and if you are a Morehead resident. If comments were submitted to the clerk prior to the meeting via email or phone, those comments will be entered into record. For more information on participation, please visit the council meetings page on the city of Morehead website at morehead@m.gov. With the Morehead City Council collectively and with gratitude acknowledge this sacred land the city of Morehead is built upon. We acknowledge the people have resided here for generations and recognize that the spirit of the Takora, A'Jibwe, Mati, and all indigenous communities permeate this land. With that, could I get a roll call, please?
Ryan Nelson.
Here.
Nicole Mattson.
Here.
Heather Niesemeyer.
Here.
Emily Moore.
Here.
Deb White.
Here.
Lisa Borgan.
Here.
Sebastian McDougall.
Here.
Chuck Hendrickson.
Here.
Mayor Shelley Carlson.
Here. And for those who are able, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. And City Manager Molly, do we have any amendments?
There are no amendments to the agenda tonight, Mayor.
Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, time motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved. Borgan and then Niesemeyer, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Moving on to recognitions and presentations, the first is our Moreheart recognition of Ashley Anderson, and I will have Lisa Bodie come up and tell us a little bit more.
Thank you, Mayor Carlson. Members of the city council, the Moreheart selection committee is recommending that tonight you recognize Ashley Anderson for her courageous act and composure in crisis. Shelley, do you want me to do something with? Oh. Okay. Okay. Excuse me. On the, so I'm going to tell you the story about this one because it's about one really special act of courageousness and composure in a crisis situation. Ashley was nominated by Sean Brandenburg, our director of Parks and Recreation, and the reason for the nomination is that on the afternoon of Saturday, June 21st, Morehead resident Azaree Bartzat and her friend Denise were chatting about the hot weather. After a stressful morning, Denise offered to give Azaree some much-needed mom time by taking her children, including 11-year-old JC, to the neighborhood wading pool a few blocks away. That day, Ashley Anderson also brought her daughter to that same pool. A while later, Azaree received a call. She later said she knew something was wrong even before answering the phone. While playing in the wading pool, JC had a seizure. What was initially thought to be him playing underwater was him unconscious. As Denise noticed this, she screamed and got JC out of the water. Ashley came running over and gave CPR while 911 was called. Azaree, on her way to the pool, saw the ambulance, followed them to the hospital, connecting with officers and letting them know that her son was in the ambulance. She met her husband at Essentia, and JC was later transferred to Sanford Hospital. On Sunday, as JC was being discharged, Azaree received a phone call from the responding officer informing her that Ashley had offered to share contact information if the family wanted to connect. Azaree immediately responded, absolutely. After exchanging a few texts, Azaree and Ashley and their families were able to meet up. They hit it off instantly and have since been arranging sleepovers and hanging out together. As Azaree said, "This is the best possible thing I could ever ask of someone." Ashley is not just a friend, she is now family. So Azaree shared that what could have been a tragedy has become a beautiful outcome and a great start to a relationship with Ashley and her family. Sean Brandenburg wrote in Ashley's nomination, "Ashley's ability to recognize the emergency, take immediate action, and perform lifesaving measures exemplifies remarkable bravery and presence of mind. Her quick thinking, calm demeanor, and willingness to act in a critical moment directly contributed to a positive outcome in what could have been a tragic situation. Because of Ashley's heroic response, this story has a happy ending. Her actions serve as a powerful reminder of the impact one individual can have, and we are so fortunate to have individuals like her in our Morehead community." So with that, Mayor Carlson, would you like to present the Moreheart Award? Ashley, do you want to come forward?
Sorry. Very emotional. I just want to say I'm really honored to receive this, to receive this award. It means a lot to me. And I also have a sense of that I shouldn't be recognized for this. It was just something hard to explain, but I am so grateful and just really grateful for the outcome and that JC is okay and to have such a connection now with him that I'll have for the rest of my life and with the family. So it's changed my life forever, and I'm just so happy the outcome was the way it was. So thank you so much.
Safe Cities event and really hear all of the details about what happened that day and so glad that you were there, Ashley, and that you guys have come together as two families now. Congratulations again. Next on the agenda is our swearing in and badge pinning for Morehead police officers. I will turn this over to Chief Helmick.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. First of all, I just want to thank you all for allowing us the time and the space this evening to hold this swearing in ceremony. It's an important moment, not just for the officers taking their oath, but also for their families, their loved ones, the department, and the whole community of Morehead. These ceremonies are more than just tradition, they're a public affirmation of service, integrity, and commitment for these officers. And sharing this moment with all of you and the community reinforces the transparency and the trust that are essential to our work. The good news is in the coming weeks, at the next two council meetings after this, we're going to continue to welcome new officers to the department. At the next meeting, we'll welcome Assistant Chief Alfelt, and then the meeting after that, we will have another group of officers that are currently going through our new officer academies. So that's pretty exciting, and we also anticipate having another group in November. So with all those multiple events coming up, I think this signals that the momentum is building and that our department has turned a corner when it comes to staffing and our hiring efforts. And with that, I'd like to recognize Sergeant Joe Brandon, who's really been the force behind that, and he's been working tirelessly to get people in the door and find us good candidates. So thank you, Joe, for all that you do. With that, too, we have high hopes that hopefully over the next year, we will actually reach or be close to full staff, and that is definitely a change in tone from when I was standing up here in April, talking about taking over this role. So again, Sergeant Brandon is the main person to get the credit for that. But with that, we aren't letting up either. Just because we are hoping to be there, we still want to make sure that we keep our foot on the pedal, and, but it definitely signals that we're on the right track. And reaching that goal is really going to strengthen our ability to serve the community of Morehead. So tonight, we're going to present to you six officers. Three of these officers recently completed their field training, but they haven't had the opportunity to have a public swearing in or a badge pinning opportunity. We also have two other officers that are currently in the training program, and we have one officer who's joined us for the first time tonight. So as I name the individual officers, what we're going to have them do is come in one at a time, and then they'll invite their friend or family member up to pin the badge on, and then we'll have the officer step aside, and once we get the entire group up here, we'll have the mayor swear them in. For the families and friends that are here, if you would like to come up and take some photos while they're getting their badge pinned, you are certainly welcome to do that. We know this is a big opportunity. We'll be taking photos as well, but certainly feel free and don't think you're getting in the way. This is, this opportunity is for you. So do what you like to do, get some photos. And once we're done here, we'll also bring the officers next door to have an opportunity to take some more formal photos and give you some more opportunity for that, so.
And Chief Helmick, can just interrupt. There are more seats, so those in the back, if you want to move forward, feel free to come and take those chairs so you can see a little bit better. You don't have to if you don't want to, though.
We won't bite. Okay. Officer Erica Brewer, who just graduated from her field training yesterday, so. We'll start telling the new recruits to pre-poke some holes in theirs, so. All right. If we could have the officers line up in front here, and then the mayor would like
Well, first of all, congratulations to all of you, and I'm so happy that so many of your friends and family could be here for this very monumental occasion. Obviously, you've all reached the qualifications of being a peace officer in the state of Minnesota in the city of Morehead, but there are some other job qualifications of a police officer that I don't think everyone is always fully aware of. My husband was a law enforcement officer for about 14 years, and at least 11 to 12 of them, he served with the Morehead Police Department. So I want your friends and family to know that we take the mental health and physical health of our officers very seriously. It's something that friends and family are very fully aware of the challenges that each of these men and women have to deal with on a daily basis. So there are some additional qualifications. Contrary to what Sergeant Brandon says, I have made it through this before without getting emotional because it brings back a lot of memories of having my own husband out patrolling when maybe situations aren't the best. So I'm going to try to make it through the second time because it has been at least once, but I apologize in advance if I do get a little emotional. So job qualifications of a police officer. A police officer has to be able to run miles through alleys in the dark, scale walls and enter homes a health inspector wouldn't go into, all while wearing 20-plus pounds of equipment, which my understanding is as you get older, the belt becomes a little bit lighter because you realize, maybe you don't, but I'll let you guys deal with that. The officer must be able to sit in a car during surveillance all day, cover a homicide scene that night, canvass a neighborhood for witnesses, and be able to show up in court the next day to testify in a year-old case, remembering all of those details on little or no sleep. A police officer must be in top physical condition on black coffee, Mountain Dew, or energy drinks, and half-eaten meals frequently consumed in their squad car in less than five minutes. A police officer needs to have three pairs of eyes, one that sees through a bulge in a coat pocket before asking, "May I see what's in there?" already knowing what's in there, and wishing they would have taken that accounting job. A second pair of eyes on either side of their head to look out for his or her partner's safety, and a third pair of eyes in front to be able to look reassuringly at a bleeding victim and say, "You're going to be okay," even when they know it's not true. A police officer must be able to talk a 250-pound intoxicated and combative individual into a squad car without incident and raise a family on a civil service paycheck. The officer must be able to tell you the elements of 100 different crimes, recite the Miranda warning in their sleep, detain, investigate, search, and arrest a criminal on the street in less time than it takes five learned judges to debate the legality of the arrest, and somehow keep a positive outlook and maintain a sense of humor. A police officer must have phenomenal personal control. Okay, it's only going to be one time, Brandon. They must be able to deal with horrific graphic crime scenes, coached confessions from pedophiles, come for a sexual assault victim, know the names and numbers and services of dozens of community resources, and respond to chance encounters with the public with friendliness and a ready smile at all times. Remember that you are a member of an elite group of individuals who swear to honor, serve, and protect the citizens of Morehead. So Joe, Bethany, Erica, Cam, Will, and Gage, for all of these attributes and your willingness to serve, I thank you. The city council thanks you, and the community of Morehead thanks you. You're deeply appreciated and grateful for every one of you. So if you want to take your sheet out, we'll get you sworn in. So I state your name. Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support and comply with the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution and laws of the state of Minnesota.
Constitution and laws.
The charter, laws, and ordinances of the city of Morehead. The policies and procedures of the Morehead Police Department. And the law enforcement code of ethics. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties as a police officer to the best of I further pledge that on my honor, I will never betray my badge, my integrity, my character, or the public trust. I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions. I will always uphold my community and the agency I serve.
All right. Congratulations again, everyone. Our next presentation of the night is a presentation by Rachelle Aboah, who is the Engagement Director with Resource Connect. So Rachelle, if you, there you are, you want to come up to the podium, and then you can
Good evening, city council and members of Morehead. It's a pleasure to meet everyone this evening. I'm a bit nervous, I don't know why, but I am. My name is Rachelle, and I am the Engagement Director at Resource Connect. We are a small grassroots nonprofit in the area that provides free transportation and work attire to those who need it and are facing financial barriers. This evening, we'll go through slides of some of the services that we offer, the people who are mostly impacted, and the work that we do within the Fargo-Morehead area. I'm trying to figure out which one would be the best one for me to use. So our mission is to help provide reliable transportation for those facing financial hardship. Our main focus is on the working class that is just needing a little bit of help pushing just to that next paycheck, whether it's to help them fix their vehicle, they just moved here so that they don't live close to the bus system, or the bus don't go directly to their work, or just down on their luck for right now. That is the people in which we seek to help. Our impact is creating economical stability by providing or removing critical barriers to a consistent employment. Some of the challenges we've seen in the Fargo-Morehead and why we came to be is limited public transportation. So those who are moving from bigger cities, or even here in Minneapolis, they're coming from Minneapolis-St. Paul area and coming down here to Morehead, our bus systems don't run as frequent or don't hit every location, especially the industrial parks. So extending that assistance or expenses, so they have to decide if putting food on the table or having reliable transportation to get to work, or just whether that's going to light bills or rent, trying to figure out which one is important for that month. Although we love our wonderful weather here in the Fargo-Morehead area, but sometimes it's even harsh to catch public transportation, and then language barriers to kind of figure out the resources on getting these transportation. Our solution has been partnering up with various organizations, operating cargo vehicle to picking up people directly from their home and taking them to these workspaces. Ride share and education, we provide things like bus passes, gas cards, we'll pick you up and drop you to work, pick you up and bring you home. We'll also help fix your vehicle if it's something minor like a tire or a brake pad, anything to help you get to work. So far, our impact has been, we have helped about 150 people, and this is through our emergency ride share as well as our long-term ride share. So our emergency ride share is, you woke up this morning, your car broke down, and you're like, "What am I going to do?" You can give us a call, we'll go pick you up and take you to work. Our long-term care goes from three weeks all the way to a month. It can be extended depending on how dire need or your situation is at the moment. With the bus passes, it varies just because even though we'd love to do more bus passes, the limitation of how close people live to a bus route or how close the bus route is to their work. This is some of the people we have helped. If they're really close, so Walmart on 13th Avenue has those apartment right behind it, we provide bikes, so that way you're close enough to even just ride a bike in the summertime until you save enough to get a vehicle. On the right, we helped one of our clients get his vehicle fixed, he just needed a new brake pad, the vehicle was working perfectly, so success stories like that. Some of the people in which we really see, majority is hardship or immigrants that are migrating here, that were FM area. are migrating here, that were FM area, Native American, and then just rural community members. We don't discriminate, even though we say that it's hardship sometimes, you have a really good paying jobs and life hits, and you just need that help for right now. Some of the support we do ask from the community is spreading that word. Not a lot of people know that this service is out to the community. So maybe you may know a single mom or a family that needs something like this. We ask that you provide these services, let them know that we're here to help them. The best type of promotion is word of mouth. Some other things is, for our work attire, we do provide the work clothing. If you have anything that's gently used, where you're like, "I could donate this," we do take donation. Our office is right across the street, next to the American Crystal Sugar Building, next to Center Mall, so we're always asking for donation in clothing, shoes, whatever you are able to get. And even in funds, if you guys are able to donate, that is, would be very appreciative. Our, we're trying to expand. We've partnered up with people like Marvin Window and Cardinal IG in providing a secondary bus for this upcoming winter. We do have a waiting list of people, but because we don't have that bus, we have to first come, first served in dire needs and kind of play it by like, who really needs it right now. Our location, we pick up starting from Dilworth, we go to Harwood, we've Morehead, Fargo, West Fargo, and another place, I'm trying to think, Harwood, Horace, that's the other place. So we also go to Horace. And then, we are a strong volunteer base, so also if you wanna volunteer, just throwing that out there, we're a very strong volunteer base. All of the people who drive are volunteering to go ahead and pick up these people and drop them to work. So that's how we're up and working right now. Our vision is just to basically help the community, listen to needs, figure out what we can do to help those unfortunate. I've worked at the Salvation Army, I've worked at Churches United, I've worked at Job Corps, even though they're no longer more, but I've been in situations where you hear it times and times again, someone gets a job and they last less than a month, two months, three months because of transportation need. I know that's not something we hear so much, we usually hear homelessness or food outage, but transportation is so major in the area we are at. So I wanna tell everybody, once again, thank you for giving me the opportunity to come and share this. I really appreciate it.
Rachelle, if you wanna come back to the podium really quick, can you just tell folks how people get connected with you? Do you have a website? Do you have a phone number? Or, you know, what would be the mechanism to do that?
Sorry for running off. I told you guys I was nervous. So the best way to reach us, our office address is 10 Fourth Street North, Morehead, Minnesota, 56560. Our phone number is 701-540-3825. If you are looking into volunteering or donating, you can visit our website, and that is www.myresourceconnect.com, or Facebook. That's also Resource Connect. Try to put the Fargo, 'cause I did realize there's another Resource Connect in Connecticut or somewhere like that. So just put Fargo, but those are the best ways to reach us if you are interested in donating, volunteering, or just stopping by to see the area, or wanna refer someone that you think may benefit from this.
Hey, thank you so much.
No problem. Thank you, guys.
And considering that we frequently have conversations related to transportation, and that's one of the challenges with workforce development, I'm really glad that your organization exists, and it doesn't surprise me that you're already serving that many individuals throughout the community. So thank you. Moving on to the approval of the July 28, 2025 meeting minutes, so I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second. The motion and a second, any discussion? See none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We have citizens to address the council. We have a number of individuals that want to address item 22A. And I would just give those individuals just a heads up that it seems that it's all the same. So instead of being here for 30 minutes and everybody says the same thing, if you want to maybe make sure that if the comments or the statements that you are going to say are the same, we don't need to have 10 people up here repeating basically the same thing. So for those of you who are here, about 22A, if you wanna just be aware of that. But we do have somebody who would list to address the council for an item that is not currently on the agenda, and that's what number seven is for. So if that individual would like to come up to the podium, this would be Stephen Furness. And Stephen, I'll let you come up here. I don't know if you were here at the beginning, but how this works is, there's this lovely contraption here. When the light is green, that means your three minutes are still going. When it turns red, you'll need to wrap it up. We have, we just provide people with three minutes to address the council. It's not an opportunity to have back and forth conversation. This is your opportunity to give information to the council. They'll take it if it's something that, there's a staff member here that can maybe meet with you afterwards out in the atrium area. I'll direct one of our staff to speak with you there. But with that, if you wanna state your name, and if you are a resident from Morehead, and then there will be three minutes on the clock.
Thank you, Mayor Carlson. I am a resident of Morehead, and thank you, members of the council, for your time today. I'm here to speak about the camping ban, sorry, camping ban that's currently active in Morehead. Houselessness is on the rise here in Minnesota. The National Alliance to End Homelessness reports that last year, houselessness went up by about 22% in our state, and this is a continuing trend going back to 2018. So without some immediate hard work in the immediate future, we can expect another increase this year. And I wanted at this point to share some data from here in Morehead specifically, and I would like it if that data could be provided to me, because I've been working this week to find it, and I, since that, have not found anything concrete. And I, I just, is this, is this why we're not doing anything about it? Because the data is just not out there for you guys? I mean, it's shocking to me that this could be hidden from you, given what's going on in Fargo right now with the removal of the benches. We managed to get that pushed out to September, and I appreciate that, but this is a repeating pattern of trying to hide the homelessness issue from our citizens. And I don't know about you, but I'm not doing, I'm not able to hide from this. Every time I go out into the city, I'm seeing the unhoused on our streets. They're doing their best, you know? They're trying to keep everything together, but they're not given many protections, and they're allowed even fewer dignities. And with all that said, like, knowing that this is going to be a continuing issue, and knowing that it's going to keep getting worse, how can we justify such callous work as maintaining this camping ban? Is it really not hard enough for these folks, fighting through every day, falling further and further between the cracks of this city? Is all that really not hard enough that we need to take their tents away from them as well? Maybe I could forgive this if you provided adequate shelter for these people, but you know that we don't have that. Maybe I could be convinced to permit it if you had delivered on housing first. We've all been waiting for it, hasn't happened yet, but no. Instead, we have this camping ban, restricting these poor folks' very restrictive lives. This ban doesn't do our community any good. It only serves to hide our failures, just as Fargo is attempting to do right now. And maybe that's why the Human Rights Commission failed to meet recently. Supposedly, they skipped out because there was nothing on the agenda, but if I could be so bold, housing is a human right. It ought to be guaranteed to all people. It ought to be fully protected. And until it is, we shouldn't have commissions shirking their duty. And until housing is a guaranteed right enjoyed by all of our citizens, camping bans like the one currently active in Morehead belong in a waste bin and not in our city code. And as long as I have your attention, I'd also like to speak briefly about how we have no solid guarantees that there will be warming centers this winter for the unhoused population. It is going to get very cold, and it's going to keep getting more and more cold every year as we continue to see the effects of climate change. We have to have warming centers available for these people so they don't freeze on the streets. Thank you, council. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Furness. Okay, for, maybe for those who are in the audience who haven't attended a Morehead City Council meeting, we don't allow interactions like that. So if, just to be aware of that, if that does happen, we'll take a brief recess, and then we'll come back. This is an opportunity, this is a business meeting, this is an opportunity for us to hear it. It's not necessarily audience participation kind of a meeting. So, and just to address you, Mr. Furness, I do appreciate your comments. I do agree that, you know, being able to be housed is a human right. It is something that we've been working on for years in the city of Morehead, and a number of the council members, myself, have participated on the FM Coalition for Homelessness, which does have a lot of that data that you likely are looking for. The camping ban that has been in Morehead for a number of years, we work very diligently with CAP LP. It's not anything that we address as something that is a criminal behavior. It's something that we work with CAP LP. They have community organizers that they get connected with so that they are treated with dignity and respect, and connected to services, and connected with the different types of housing that they might be eligible for through a Section 8 voucher or something like that. The other thing that I would just mention is that there was an opening recently of shelter for individuals who are 55 and older who are homeless, that is silver linings, and that's with connections with Churches United. So that is gonna provide, I don't even remember the number of beds that are gonna be available for those individuals, because there's been an increase in older adults who have become homeless. So, and I believe it was the last council meeting, and the one before, that we also awarded a number of contracts with entities that are gonna be building low-income and affordable housing for folks. Unfortunately, it's not something that we can solve in just a few weeks' time. It's something that's, something we've been working on diligently for several years. So I hope that addresses, hopefully that addresses some of the questions that you had. So moving on to number 9A, this public hearing, and I will turn this item over to Mr. Mike Reitz, our Assistant City Attorney. I will need a motion to open the public hearing for an ordinance granting a fiber optic franchise to Gateway Infrastructure.
So moved to approve? Or open? Sorry.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion to open the public hearing, and a second, any discussion? See none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the public hearing is open. I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Reitz.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, City Council. Tonight, we're conducting a public hearing to consider approval of an ordinance granting a non-exclusive fiber optic ordinance to Gateway Infrastructure. They plan to install and operate a fiber optic network within the city right-of-way. The city charter requires that companies be issued a franchise in order to conduct that sort of activity within our right-of-way. This is one, the first step in a several-step process. Tonight, we'll hold the public hearing, and we'll have the first reading on the amendments to the ordinance for the, to grant the franchise agreement, franchise. And, and then at our next meeting on the 25th, we'll have the second reading of the ordinance, and the council will also consider the granting of the franchise agreement with that, with that company. Derek Leffert, who is representing Gateway, I believe is here this evening.
Yep, he is. He's coming from the back.
Okay. To answer any questions that, that you might have about their company and their plans.
All right. So this is the public hearing portion of this item. Are there any members of the public who wish to come and speak on this agenda item? Again, are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? If not, I would be looking for a motion to close the public hearing portion of this item.
So moved Nisa Meyer.
Second.
I have Nisa Meyer with the second. I also heard Moore and McDougal in unison, so you can flip heads or tails, just pick one. But a motion and a second, any discussion? See none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the public hearing is closed. Council members, do you have any questions of this agenda item? And if there are none, I would be looking for a motion to approve the first reading of this ordinance.
So moved Deb White, second, Nisa Meyer.
A motion and a second, any discussion? See none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. No questions for you. Thank you very much, and congratulations. Okay, next on the agenda would be mayor and council reports. So the members of the council have reports from boards or committees. Councilmember Nisa Meyer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to note that the Solid Waste Advisory Committee is continuing to meet and increase education across the county about ways for people to responsibly reuse and recycle good items. The Resource Recovery Center is a wonderful opportunity. They have a reuse room. It has been highlighted recently in the news, and so I wanted to highlight it here again. So if you are looking for something for your home, apartment, please check there first as an opportunity to reuse good products that are available at no cost. There is a limit to the reuse room, to five items per day, so please feel free to bring in and remove things that you have of need. I also want to mention that Greater Morehead Days are coming up, and there are a number of events associated with Greater Morehead Days. We've got a parade on Friday, September 5th, and the reason I wanna mention it now so early and in advance is that we've got a lot of opportunity to have people participate in parades. And so if that moves you, your organization, please, I encourage you to get signed up. Support is being offered by a wonderful group reined in by Inclusive Morehead, and so if you need some support for participating in the parade, please reach out. There's also a gathering after the parade for all of Morehead to attend. It is roughly at 6 o'clock-ish, depending on how long the parade goes, at M State. And so I wanna appreciate our host site, M State this year, for allowing us to gather there again after the parade. I look forward to many conversations. The fly-in is September 6th. It's Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and it's a free event. There are pancakes and plane rides for kiddos, tattoos, bubbles, stickers, tours of planes that are in pieces, as well as put together helicopters to check out, lots of very cool things. And so I encourage you to bring your neighbors and bring the whole family out to the fly-in. And on Saturday, September 6th, at our very fantastic Morehead Airport, which will be celebrating its 30th year as well. The last Greater Morehead Days and Welcome Week and fabulous event I'd like to mention is the Longest Table. The Longest Table has run in our community for a number of years, and it is scheduled for September 18th, and it will be held at Trinity Lutheran. We are still looking for volunteers, table hosts, a variety of things, or if you just wanna come and enjoy conversations and a great free meal, please register. All of that information is available online. If you check out social media, you can find the Longest Table event in Morehead and Dilworth, and reach out to me if you can't find any information. I'd love to share it with you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Other members of the council who have reports? Councilmember White.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I wanted to thank the staff and who put together Night to Night, and all of the hosts who put together for their neighborhoods, and obviously, the weather didn't cooperate like we wish, but I know some of us still went out anyway, and it was nice. I had some baked goods that weren't gonna be that good the next day, and so it was nice to still get out there and visit with some hosts. And it's always such a great community organizing event, and I love that we have such a huge And it's always such a great community organizing event and I love that we have such a huge presence with that, that I think we had over 60, was it 61 different neighborhoods that were hosting them. And not to brag, but a third of them were in Ward 3, so woo-oo. I also wanted to thank the organizers of the People's Pride event that took place on Saturday in Gooseberry Park. It was a fun and inclusive event and I really appreciated the invitation. And then I just wanted to send my condolences to the family and friends of Diane Ray Williams. Diane was one of my first council members when I moved here to Moorehead and she was also the person who got me on planning commission, which was my, sort of the gateway for me that got me hooked on local government. And she was a great, a great friend and a mentor. I loved working with her on the Historical and Cultural Society of Clay County and sad to see her pass and her legacy will live on. Thank you.
All right, other councilmember, Mattson.
I have just one quick road construction update from Ward 1, but I did want to say one thing about Diane Ray Williams. A lot has been said about her work in the community, but I just wanted to say she was so much fun. I think anybody who knew her, she was just such a firecracker. I never saw her in a bad mood, always had a smile on her face and just at absolute delight at all times. So she will be missed. Regarding road construction in Ward 1, which I'm sure she would be happy to, let me give, take this moment to also give an update. First Avenue, you can sign up, Mindot has a mailing list and you can sign up for underpass project updates. I have done that and there is a slight delay on reopening Main Avenue. So it was supposed to be in August, but because of the rain, we're now delayed. We're hoping for mid-September is what Mindot says. And the reason I'm sharing this is because I had shared earlier that the original plan was the end of August and we were on track until I got this email today.
Thank you. Any other councilmembers? All right, seeing none for my reports. Since the last county, or since the last council meeting, I've had about 12 to 13 different meetings that I've attended. Some, some of the ones that I think are noteworthy, I was asked by the League of Minnesota, Women, League of Minnesota, or League of Women Voters to speak at an event of the Badass Grammas of Democracy, so that was a really fun event. Also met with the coordinators of the All African Festival that is coming up the last two weekends in August, so you'll just need to Google the All African Festival. And I was asked to be a judge in their All African Fargo-Moorehead Pageant, so that will be a first for me to judge a pageant. Attended a board orientation and my first meeting for the League of Minnesota, League of Minnesota Cities down in St. Paul about two weeks ago. And then I also wanted to just give a shout out to Trollwood for another successful production. They did Mamma Mia this year to multitude of sold-out crowds. And particular, congratulations to Councilmember Hendrickson because his son was in the production. Another huge milestone which has been also circulating is that the Metro Flood Diversion Authority did reroute the red, which was a huge milestone in this six-to-seven-year project that we've been working on since essentially 2009. There was a number of dignitaries that attended the event. North Dakota Governor Armstrong was there, Senators Hoven, Klobuchar, and Smith, representatives from the Minnesota and North Dakota DNR, Mayor Mahoney, and myself, and the current Chair of the Flood Diversion, Cass County Commissioner Tony Gridenberg. The chair rotates between the Mayor of Moorehead, the Mayor of Fargo, and the Cass County Commissioner. So you had the, you always have the past, the current, and the future Chair of the diversion always circulating. This was extremely monumental because it's a last control structure that the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers is building and it will be turned over in the next few weeks to the diversion, which will be the one monitoring it and making sure that it operates at, operates the way it should in, in the future. I just wanted to send again a huge message of appreciation and gratitude to the dozens and dozens and dozens of people that started meeting probably in 2009 when Mayor Voxlin was here at the podium or at the dais when Moore Landing was a representative down in St. Paul. So many people came together to put this joint powers agreement in place in 2016 to make sure that Moorehead and Fargo someday in the future have permanent, reliable flood protection and can save us millions of dollars in homeowners flood insurance and to have us safe. So just want to give gratitude to all of the federal representatives, the state representatives, all of our local leaders who have just went above and beyond and really became and are continue to be a model for not just North Dakota, Minnesota, but for the United States as the way that you can work not just across two states, but across a river, across multitude of jurisdictions. And all of the funding that went through and came from our federal partners, from our state partners, the state of Minnesota contributed, I think, over 110 million. We still have about 60 million to go, but over $100 million has been contributed by the state of Minnesota and, you know, 750 million from the state of North Dakota, 450 million from our federal counterparts and all of the local option sales tax that's on the North Dakota side. $3 billion, $3.2 billion is a lot of money to raise to, to make sure that we have permanent, reliable flood protection, but it's because there's so many people committed to doing it and we're continuing to work together and look forward to when we have a ribbon cutting, hopefully next year, sometime in October where it will be operational. So we have one more spring to get through, so fingers crossed that we can get there. That, Citybanner Mala, do you have any reports?
Yes, Mayor. Well, a lot of my, well, my reports were kind of covered, but as we prepare for this next item on the agenda, I just, I can't help but, so Diane, our friend, died and she left us with a clear idea of who she really was. I can say just on behalf of all of the staff that worked and people all across Moorehead, that she had a lot of fun with life, no doubt about that. She taught, she gave a lot, she was smart and wise and she learned to love. And she did the best with what she was given. And, you know, I think all of us in Moorehead really, I mean, it's really been something in the last week recognizing her for what she really was, which was a gift. And so I think this is like, you know, truly represents the character of Moorehead and what we can do together.
All right, thank you for that. We do not have an executive session tonight. We did have an item that was placed on the agenda on Friday under New Business, requested by councilmembers Mattson and Borgan to discuss aerial spraying. We do have 10 requests to speak forms. I am anticipating, again, that these are individuals who will all say the same thing, so I'm going to call them up in the order that this stack of, stack was given to me, so it's very random. And what you'll need to do is you'll need to come to the podium, you'll need to state your name. If you are a resident of Moorehead, you will have three minutes to speak. If I call your name up and somebody before you has already addressed all your talking points, please just defer and acknowledge that what you wanted to say has already been said. We don't need to kind of repeat the same thing over and over again. So the first on my stack here is Lonis Pakwin Lewis. I should probably have put my cheater glasses on.
All right, I'm a Moorehead resident, all, all my life, 17th Street, South 2,000 Block. I just wanted to, you know, I haven't done this before, so rather than, you know, I have some data, but I know that it was put out on social media about the delay. And then it was never, there was never any follow-up about when or why. And I know there was a lot of comments on, I think it's Pethrin, looking at the harmful effects of the, of the chemical. And I know we have $387,000 in the budget for mosquito spraying. And there's also the other flip side of that coin is the West Nile virus. It said there was a higher incidence, but we didn't see any data on what that means. But I think people get a one-sided view of, hey, we've got a chemical, it's bad. I know I got lambasted because I want to see the mosquitoes get sprayed. The reality of it is, I did look at the rate of .0035 pounds per acre, because I was told I should drink some. I actually can and I'd be fine at that rate. So what I guess I'd look to the council and everything, what I'd like to see as a resident is a little bit more data that tells both sides of the story. I also think that Cass County, or is it Cass Vector Control, they have, they have some pretty good information on their website. It does address the dangers or actually lack of danger to humans and animals. What it doesn't address, that I read quite a bit on social media, was how it might affect bees and butterflies. I do know the threshold for butterflies is higher than it is for, for mosquitoes. I'd like to see some data on that that would say, yeah, that's accurate and that's how we're spraying. You know, the lack of, the lack of text that actually discussed frequency, application rates, weather, I know bees is another one that'll probably get brought up tonight. Totally legit, right? And the biggest thing that I read was timing. But there's also, I can't find anything for efficacy. If there's alternatives, I've heard people saying, release bats, which I don't want to see. I've seen people release more dragonflies. What's the efficacy? And then let's counter that with the efficacy of, of the chemical spraying. And then finally, if we have $387,000 and we're not going to do it, I want to know where I can go pick up my chemical to do my yard. That's what I've got. Thanks.
Thank you. The next individual is Mavis and I'm not going to try to say your last name, spelled T-J-O-N. Chon. So Mavis, if you want to come up to the podium and state your name and if you are a resident of Moorehead, and you'll have three minutes on the clock.
My name is Mavis Chon. Some of the family says T-John, but we do live in Moorehead and I'd be very brief. I appreciate all the scientific information, concern for environment and all of those things. I also am very empathetic to people who have lost loved ones, loved ones to Nile virus. It is a virus, there's no cure, so even if it's survivable, they will never be healthy again. People who are diabetic, which I am one, have a greater possibility of getting West Nile. There is also quality of life issue. We live in the wintertime and we don't go out a lot. Summer is our time to be outdoors. I had my first mosquito bite 10 days ago and within two days, I was on antibiotics. I had two visits to the doctor and I've now got several more just from walking out the door of our house. So after spending winter indoors, I'm a prisoner of mosquitoes. And so I think we should consider also the human side of being able to enjoy the short summers that we have. And with the invasion of mosquitoes, it's really difficult to do for those of us who are reactive to it. So I would respectfully ask that you consider quality of life issues along with the other things that you have to look at for this and hopefully figure out that we could do some spraying. Thank you.
Thank you. The next individual that I have is Joseph Allen.
I too am. I'm Joseph Allen. I live in Moorehead. I do live in Moorehead. I am a representative of the high-risk group. I'm 74 years old. We are subject to far greater risk of just about everything, contracting every disease that you could imagine. So when I look at something like the West Nile virus, rather than listen to anecdotes about somebody's experience with a relative or someone that they knew, one individual, I think we need, for public health, we need to look at the information that's available that's very clear about West Nile virus. Of the people that contract West Nile virus, 80% of them have no symptoms whatsoever. The additional 20%, most of them have mild symptoms. There is a very small segment of less than 1% that develop severe symptoms. And certainly, those are the people that we're concerned about. So you look at these numbers and you, you say, well, my chances as a 74-year-old guy are about 99.3% in my favor. And I would take those odds just about any day. There are things that are far worse for the high-risk group. Number one is heart disease. Number two is cancer. Number three is accidents. You can imagine, you know, driving to the grocery store. And those are the top three. If you go all the way down to number eight or so, you, you hit today's COVID, which is, as you know, far milder than the previous COVID that was significantly harming the population. People don't worry about COVID too much anymore, except for some of the immunosuppressed. Farther down the list, not even on the top 10 list, is West Nile virus. And you can imagine, the fatality rate of West Nile virus is very, very low. It's, it's in the single digits. So it doesn't even begin to compare to my risk of getting cancer from various carcinogens that are in our environment and we keep adding more. So why do we want to add another carcinogen, whether it's considered to be mild or not, to our entire city in a, as a response to mosquitoes, potentially West Nile virus? Why can't we use a more measured approach where people take a little more responsibility or a lot more responsibility if they're in the high-risk group? I can put on insect repellent. I can wear long, long pants, long sleeves. I can stay in at dawn and dusk. So I'll wrap it up. Yes, I understand.
Thank you.
So that's my, that's my recommendation.
Thank you. The next individual is Elizabeth Schwank. And I apologize if I mispronounce your last name, but if you can state your name if you're a resident of Moorehead.
My name's Libby Sternhagen Schwank. I'm a resident of Moorehead and I'm a trained ecologist. I've spent this summer visiting all of Moorehead's prairie plantings and pollinator pockets. It's taken all summer because, as I've discovered, there are a lot of them. I know that the diligent efforts of this council have been key to this success. Moorehead's comprehensive plan states that Moorehead seeks to pursue strategies to increase the number of eco-friendly, pollinator-friendly plantings on public and private land. The dozens of native plantings I've visited around town are filled with bees, butterflies, and dragonflies, which are a natural predator of mosquitoes. And that shows me that our attempts to help pollinators and other beneficial insects are working. Thus, you can likely understand my distress when I learned last week that Moorehead, after a five-year streak of no aerial insecticide spraying, was planning to spray poison from the sky. I remember vividly the monarch massacre of 2020 when hundreds of butterflies died after insecticide flyover. In this moment of uncertainty, I went to the data. I found that peer-reviewed articles show inconsistent evidence for, to support adulticides as an effective method of decreasing mosquito population numbers and West Nile cases. Additionally, the looming threat of insecticide resistance means the more mosquitoes are sprayed, the more likely they are to become resistant to control measures. Meanwhile, pollinators and other beneficial insects whose populations are already dwindling due to disease, extreme habitat loss, and yes, pesticide exposure, are killed in the crossfire when we rely on aerial pesticide applications. In Moorehead, we, we work to create habitat for bees, butterflies, and beneficials, but when we apply aerial pesticides, the habitats we built become death traps. Moorehead's comprehensive plan seeks to increase pollinator-friendly plantings, but the approach is not friendly if the insects are attracted to the good habitat just to die when they get there from an insecticide that wasn't even meant for them at all. This is especially important right now in the month of August when monarch butterflies are visiting our town in their migration south. I applaud the city for the work that has been done to improve Moorehead's approach to mosquito control, but we can go further. Instead of resorting to aerial spraying, Instead of resorting to aerial spraying, let's use the city's risk matrix to increase public awareness of West Nile transmission and the steps people can take to protect themselves. We can use the money set aside for an airplane flight to instead educate the public, hand out bug spray, and provide homeowners with backyard mosquito buckets. These are just a few of the many alternatives available to us. By saying no to aerial spraying, we can provide pollinators and ourselves with a safe place to exist away from the threat of poison. I am willing to be part of a better solution, and I hope you are too.
Thank you. Next individual I have is Martha Wheeler.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. My name is Martha Wheeler. I live in Moorhead. Protecting invertebrates is protecting humanity. The food web depends on insects, without which there are no people. Moorhead has taken good steps to support pollinators and other crucial insects by installing native habitat, but it makes no sense to spray permethrin on this habitat. Beneficial insect habitat has plunged in recent decades due to human habitation development and agricultural product practices. Aerial spraying of adulticides like permethrin to kill mosquitoes also kills bees, moths, and butterflies as well as being a threat to human health, especially among children and elders. We can make a paradigm shift to provide, to provide and protect wildlife and human habitat in urban settings. A few facts from the Pollinator Partnership, the Xerxy Society, and Audubon. Monarch butterfly population has declined by more than 80% since the 1990s from the central Mexico, from central Mexico where the eastern population overwinters, and by more than 95% since the 1980s in coastal California where the western population overwinters. Native bumblebees have exhibited declines in geographic range in the last 20 years, and their populations have declined by over 90%. The number of managed honeybee colonies in the United States has dropped from 5 million in the 1940s to approximately 2.68 million in 2023, according to the U.S. D. Animal and Plant Health Inspection Service. The 2025 U.S. State of the Birds report reveals continued widespread declines in American bird populations across all mainland and marine habitats, with 229 species requiring urgent conservation action. The report comes five years after the landmark 2019 study that documented the loss of 3 billion birds in North America over 50 years. The Xerxy Society says, "It's understandable why, in the face of mounting, a mounting health crisis, communities and health organizations scramble to prevent mosquito-borne disease outbreaks by any means necessary. Spraying may seem like a quick way to soothe the public's nerves, but as a strategy for controlling mosquitoes, it's a blunt and ineffective tool. Widespread application of adulticides creates a false sense of security while causing many unintended and far-reaching consequences. Through the application of common sense protocols and proactive planning, effective mosquito management that limits impacts on the environment is possible."
Thank you, Ms. Wheeler. Your three minutes are up. Next is Marie Rizdal. You state your name, and if you're a Moorhead resident.
Marie Rizdal, and yes, I'm from Moorhead. We've actually lived here for, gosh, almost 30 years. So I've seen a lot of different things over the years. I am an avid gardener. I'm also highly reactive to bug bites in general. I get the welts. I itch for days, things like that. Some things have already been talked about, so I'm not going to redo those, but some of those standard measures, the spraying yourselves, the wearing the clothes, the whatever it is, doesn't work. Doesn't work for everybody. It's not a catch-all. It's not a fix-it-all. We also, I think, need to look at different areas of the city and treating it differently. I live on the north side, the way north side. We have standing waters and ditches sometimes, whether, we're not far from the river, so there's different standing water, different places. We've had weather in the past years where we weren't sprayed. We weren't, we didn't have the little granules put in our ditches that are standing full of water, and I had, I finally called city manager, I think it was two or three years ago, and I said, we've got standing water. Rest of Moorhead didn't get anything. We got three inches. And they went, oh! And we got treated because we asked for it. We needed something. We need to look at the city as different parts. There might be parts that are better, might be parts that are worse. But I think we also need to consider, like has been talked about, the healthy issues. It's not just a West Nile thing. Some of us just get eaten alive no matter what we do. And it's hard. It's hard to be out in the summer. It's hard to be out with our families and our friends at these picnics, the events, and everything that happen in the city. It's hard to be at those because we're getting eaten alive, no matter what we put on, no matter what we spray on ourselves, no matter what we wear. There is a level of medium in there. I agree, there's pollinators, they're great, the butterflies, I love them. I need them for my garden. I love them in my garden. However, I can't be in my garden if we don't do something to do some control. I spray my yard, I spray myself, but there's got to be something that we need to consider overall when it comes to the whole city, and also as good neighbors, the whole metro. I mean, we got the Fargo, Moorhead, West Fargo, Dilworth, Horace, pick 'em. We're a whole community, and if only some of us do something to do something about it, it's not going to help. It's not going to get us anywhere. So I may have an unpopular opinion. I may not have the loudest voice. I'm on social media. I see the things. I see everybody. However, we need to consider not just who's being the loudest, we need to consider the city as a whole and the things we need to do for not only our citizens, but just as a, as a community in general. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jen Walla.
Thank you for, thank you for listening to me. I'm Jen Walla. I am a resident of Moorhead. I'm coming, I, I have a childcare, my, I have one family who requested that I post information more publicly about it. I have families who came early to let me come to this meeting on time. So, so my, my childcare family is also share my sentiments. All of you received a letter from me, just requesting postponement and, and to consider different options, and list, and listing some other options of spraying alternatives that are available. You've all read it. I don't need to take your time to look through all of that. A little bit of extra information, just a couple of things. I know Moorhead didn't do most of the spraying. There was, and there was some question with the vector control company also. I heard from, from a few sources that there was spraying north and south on Fifth, Fifth Street, Ninth Street, 12th Streets, and, and some people said that over the event in north, Moorhead, they got sprayed as well. So we would appreciate checking in with accountability for Cass County Vector Control, since Moorhead did request not to be, not to be sprayed that night, and for postponement. My childcare kids and I have a very small milkweed patch. I know that Moorhead didn't do very much spraying, like, didn't try to do any spraying, but we haven't seen, we saw butterflies for the first time the week before spring, and three days in a row monarchs. We haven't seen any since then on my pollinator garden or the milkweed patch. Looking a little bit at the National Pesticide Information Center, I found that, that permethrin particularly, and on their fact page for that, it lasts, it's said to be effective for one to three weeks on the leaves, sometimes up to a month. In soil, with plants planted in soil that has permethrin in it, as it ran off after spring in Fargo and West Fargo, trace amounts of permethrin are found in, in the roots, the leaves, the fruits of, of food crops planted in the soil 30 days after and 120 days after application, which is our growing season. Like, that's, it's trace amounts, but people are eating that over and over and eating many amounts of it, and, and for years. And so while, while one spraying application doesn't impact, like, impacts the insects, and enough to, like, tear down the nervous, nervous systems and kill them, one sprayed probably doesn't have a whole lot of impact on us, but over time, there's, it builds up.
Thank you.
So that's a thing to think, consider. Thank you very much.
Next is Noelle Harden.
I also did want to put the rumor to rest. We did check with the aerial sprayer, and the aerial sprayer did not spray when the plane was flying over the city of Moorhead. You probably, I know, and all the people saw the plane, but it's really hard to turn an, an airplane the way that they would need to do to, need to do without crossing the river, and that is what people saw. So we did double-check that, and there was no arrow spraying done on the city of Moorhead side. There could have been drifting. Unfortunately, it's very windy where we live. Wasn't really, I don't know if it was windy the last couple days, but, all right. Thank you.
All right. I'm Noelle Harden, and I do live in Moorhead. I wanted to share a little bit of history around this issue. In 2021, after the monarch massacre occurred, I joined the Aerial Application Advisory Committee. I was invited to join that committee because I have some knowledge through my work, through my background in agroecology, about this issue. I think that the Public Works Director at that time, Steve Iverson, did a wonderful job of convening the committee over the summer of 2021. We met several times. We poured over scientific data. We looked at vector control models being used around the country and best practices that would really balance the public health risk of West Nile and other diseases with the equally important public health risk of losing our pollinators, which are vital in our food system. So I was concerned seeing the announcement of the aerial spray and being unable to find any evidence on our city website that the recommendations that our committee worked hard on and was approved by the council in 2021 could not find evidence that those were still being practiced. In particular, we looked at ways to mitigate the impact on pollinators, such as spraying after sunset, such as using a reduced concentration of permethrin. We also committed to really ramping up the public communication about personal protection, and that is something I really haven't seen this summer from the city. I know I spent some time this weekend digging out the good bud, bug spray from the back of my garage, and felt like the city fell short in reminding folks and following through on the commitment we previously made to have robust communication while in advance of seeing the numbers that we are now. Aerial spraying is a very extreme and very expensive tool that loses its efficacy every single time that you use it. We should only be spraying when there is a significant risk to public health. I don't know that there are any cases in Moorhead or Clay County right now. I remember from serving on the committee, a physician who came forward and explained that with such a small number of cases of West Nile spread out over a large, pretty spread-out population, that it's very unlikely that aerial application will have any statistically significant impact on our local West Nile numbers. The money that we're spending on vector control, I question its effectiveness, given where we're at, but that's money that we're not spending on public safety. We're not spending it on new police officers. We're not spending it on affordable housing. I urge you to not negate the hard work that was done and approved by the council in 2021 because of a hasty decision at the end of the summer.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for doing that work about four years ago. Just so you're aware, we are still following those guidelines and the policy that was approved in 2021. The reason the aerial spraying didn't occur is because we found out that they can't mix the .007 and also have the .0035. So Fargo did theirs, and then things weren't set up that we would be able to follow our matrix and do it the next day. So everything has to be in place, and that was, because we were following it, that's why we did not end up going forward with the spray. The next is Allison Wallace. You can state your name, Moorhead resident.
Hi, I'm Allison Wallace, 1123 22nd Avenue South in Moorhead. And, let's see, I don't have a lot more to add. There's a lot of really good points, except for maybe a question. So it sounded like the, the decision matrix was calling for spraying the other day then? It just that it wasn't the right, they didn't have the concentration that we had.
The matrix calls for .0035 to be sprayed by aerial, and if there is presence of West Nile virus in humans in our metropolitan area.
Okay, okay. Yeah, because I was actually on that, on that group a couple of years ago as well, and I didn't remember the details exactly, but I'm pleased to find out that the city is still following that. I wasn't clear what indication you were using to, to call for the spray. But in any case, I think it's really important, just to go back to one of the gentlemen earlier about risk assessment. What are the relative risks? What are we looking at? And also what Noelle just said about public health being the top priority. So I urge you all to think about, there's comfort, there's, there's public health, and there's our, our non-human environment, and to figure out what are those priorities and be clear and transparent about which ones we're following. And also to check with Cass County Vector Control to figure out how transparent they are about what priorities they are following when they make these decisions. I do know that sometimes there's, there's a pressure to, to do a quick solution that may or may not actually have the, the, the impact that you, you expect it to happen. And there also is the timing about when you have workers like college students who end up having to go back to college, and sometimes you have less people that are able to do some of this, this control. And so there's probably a lot of other factors that go into figuring out if there's aerial spraying or not, and we want to make sure that those are all transparent so we can agree that those are things that work with our Moorhead values. Thank you.
Thank you. And then the last sheet I have is Steve Lindas. Welcome back to Moorhead.
I'm Mayor and Council Steve Lindas, Moorhead resident, formerly of Ward Four, now Ward Two. So I don't really have anything to add as a council representative on the aerial advisory, no, Aerial Application Advisory Committee. I will say that there was a lot of good work, and hopefully, one, you can revisit some of what was done, but potentially, there's a need to actually have that committee reconstituted so that we can actually keep evaluating the effectiveness. I will say that I was just visiting my daughter, who is in Norway right now, and the Norwegians, she said, were complaining about mosquitoes, and it wasn't really mosquitoes that they were complaining about, they were really black flies, because she was like, there's no mosquitoes here. And so when, once she got the translation correct, she said, oh, yeah, there are black flies. But that brings up a point that we actually were looking at pictures, and our raspberry patch in our backyard, there are pictures of us in 2000, early 2000, 2005, 2002, of in full mosquito bug nets, because we couldn't go out and pick raspberries without getting swarmed. And I don't really have that. So, I mean, a little shout out to Cass County Vector Control. They're doing a lot. Most of their work is actually done not on adulticide, but on the larval control, and that's where most of our money and most of our time and attention should be spent. And so, you know, I, I know that we can do better, and so I would basically just say, let's think about that AAAC committee, you know? Thank you.
And somebody submitted online, and we didn't have the sheet here, so Hillary Ray.
Thank you, Hillary Ray. I do live in Moorhead, and I wanted to thank you, Mayor Carlson, and other council members who have already responded to my email about this issue. I apologize, some of this probably will be redundant. I am also nurturing a small patch of native prairie plants in my backyard. One of my reasons for that was fatigue. I'm tired of fighting the weeds in my trashy turf lawn. I could contract with a lawn service and have them put down multiple applications of Roundup every year. and have them put down multiple applications of Roundup every year, but while the association of glyphosate with cancer in humans remains unclear, it's known to be deadly to bees having contact with it. And I relish seeing all of the visitors that my common milkweed attracts. Most of us have noticed the drop in numbers of monarch butterflies Martha referred to, but while monarchs are unusual in their beauty, their charisma, and their migration, they're not unique in their vulnerability to pesticide and herbicide use. Their absence is one we notice. But what about all of the other insects disappearing, the ones we don't consider? Among the other creatures enjoying the milkweed nectar in my yard is a female ruby-throated hummingbird. I see her so regularly that I suspect she's raising a baby or two. And while we associate hummingbirds with nectar, they also require a lot of protein, especially as nestlings. And that protein is derived from insects. I'm not quite old enough to remember the popularity of DDT, originally hailed as a cheap and effective weapon to reduce the incidence of malaria and typhus. Its use spread so widely that it nearly wiped out our national symbol, the bald eagle. More concerningly, over time, mosquitoes developed resistance to it, so that in addition to being dangerous, it became simply ineffective. We seem to have developed an expectation that our environment, the built environment, should be completely under our control and that we should feel free to manipulate it for our convenience and comfort. But I think it's past time that we acknowledge we're just one species among millions, and that all of us influence the others. Our actions don't occur in a vacuum, and just because you don't find dozens of humans lying dead on your sidewalk after aerial spraying of permethrin doesn't mean that those don't also affect us. Exposure to high levels has resulted in headache, nausea, convulsions, and loss of consciousness. And just because we don't rely on one specific species of insect to pollinate a food crop doesn't mean that it's expendable. As I observed in my earlier messages to council members, the city's own website offers sensible actions its residents can take to protect themselves from admittedly potentially dangerous illness.
Thank you.
I would love, as Steve mentioned, to see the city address some of the identified areas of standing water.
Ms. Ray?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I appreciate everybody coming and speaking on this agenda item. Again, as I stated earlier during the meeting, when we have citizens come to speak, this is an opportunity for us to hear the information that you're providing to us, but it's not really a chance for you to engage in a back-and-forth type of a conversation or debate with any of the council members. So the public hearing is the opportunity, I guess, for individuals to address the council. I don't have anybody else. So with this, I will turn it over to, I don't know if it's Councilmember Mattson or Borgan who wants to speak. Councilmember Borgan, with that, I will...
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. I would like to speak after Councilmember Borgan, but she'd like, I would like her to go first, if you won't mind.
Go ahead.
Figure out how to make my microphone work. Okay. So Councilmember Mattson and I maybe don't agree on a lot of things, but this wasn't a thing that we wanted to agree on, that we had heard so many comments through emails. And any of you out there who sent an email and I did not respond, I got too many emails to continue to respond. So we determined that this should be something that we talk about in the council meeting for several reasons. First of all, I want to thank everyone for being here. This is the biggest crowd we've had since I've been on the council since January. So this is a topic that people are passionate about. And as an elected official, I think it's incumbent upon us to listen when our constituents are passionate about something. That doesn't mean we're always going to agree with one side or the other, but we do have the obligation to listen. So I think we, as a council, are doing that tonight. There are several very important issues to discuss, and I think all of you folks, the 11 of you that spoke, did a great job in bringing up both sides of the issue, and I appreciate that. I can't speak for everyone, but I'm assuming that we all appreciate that. You know, it was referenced that there was a monarch massacre in 2020. I've lived in Morehead my whole life, so I clearly was here then, and I am a gardener, both flowers and vegetables. So I am sensitive to insects, both beneficial and the non-beneficial. They're just part of our ecosystem, right? And I think that it's worth saying that the city did a great job back in 2021, putting together this commission, having a policy, et cetera. But, you know, some of us who are sitting on the council now, we're not part of that discussion, so we kind of got thrown into this kind of blind. And we also had an agenda item that was on the consent agenda back in April, which we all approved, and it had to do with the vector control. I will own the fact that I did not have all the information about it, but I'm not going to say that I wouldn't have voted to continue it because it seemed like a good policy. Now, with all of that said, I think there are some important things that we, as a council, need to discuss. I don't have the authority as a single council member to, you know, bring it up or, you know, make a decision. We all have to discuss it together. That's the beauty of the elected officials. And my suggestion, first of all, is that the current members should perhaps take some more time to consider the policy that we already have and decide if we want to continue it or if we want to edit it. We can't do that at a council meeting. We would have to do it at one of our workshops. And many of you probably know, we have workshops every month about meaty issues, and we have the discussion there, and then we bring the issue to the council. So us having that ability to do that, I think, would be beneficial. The second thing is, you know, there are good arguments on both sides of this issue. We all want to enjoy our yards. We all want to be outside in the summer because our summers are fleeting. But then there's also the issue of the spraying for mosquitoes. And one of the things that we have is the truck spraying. And part of that truck spraying policy is if you want to opt out of it, you can opt out of it. The issue is you can opt out of aerial spraying. If we're going to douse the whole city, the whole city is going to get it. So, I mean, I think that's an issue that we need to visit a little bit more about, get some more data, et cetera. And then finally, it is a health concern for lots of people, both on the, like Mavis pointed out, the West Nile risk. Is it really a risk? And it was Mr. Allen who gave us other indications that it's maybe less than 1% of people who might get West Nile from a mosquito. I don't really know the answer to that, but I think it's something that we need to discuss and decide if we really want to treat everyone in the city of Morehead because there's one case of West Nile. I think we have to have a more thoughtful conversation about it. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Mattson, but my hope is that we, as a council, can take this matter into a workshop, discuss it, and come up with a solution that we will all agree on. We probably won't all agree, but that could pass, could pass when we have our next meeting. So with that said, Mayor, I will yield to Ms. Mattson.
Go ahead, Councilmember Mattson.
Thank you, Councilmember Borgan and Madam Mayor. I just want to just give you a quick preview. We do have data coming, I think, from Councilmember White specifically to the metro that I think is going to be really interesting for all of us to hear about. But we live in such a smart community, don't we? Aren't we all so smart? And so I have a lot of notes here and some printouts, but a lot of what I've said has been covered. And that's not to say that people on the other side of this issue are not smart as well. We're all, we all are very concerned. We all have our point of view, and we're all entitled to our point of view. But I just want to go through just a few things quickly here. So I asked us to take a pause. On Thursday, when I saw the reaction to the announcement that we were going to do this aerial spraying, I said, I asked, can we just take a second and just kind of think it through, discuss it a little bit? And so I just want to go over three points tonight. The first thing is our ecosystem. We've heard a lot about our ecosystem tonight and the importance of pollinators. One thing I've learned in the last few days is that one out of every three bites of food we take comes to us thanks to a pollinator. So these are not just like butterflies that are cute in your garden. These are necessary for us to live. And in fact, the U.S. Forest Service says pollination is an essential ecological function. Without pollinators, the human race and all of Earth's terrestrial ecosystems would not survive. Over 80% of the world's flowering plants require a pollinator to reproduce. Animals that assist plants in their reproduction as pollinators include species of bats, butterflies, moths, flies, birds, beetles, ants, and bees. So one of the problem with the aerial spraying of permethrin is that it is not targeted only to mosquitoes. As we heard before, it will kill any insect that reaches it. So it's not just about the bees and the butterflies and the mosquitoes. It's all the pollinators that aren't, you know, birds and bats that can get, can be killed by this aerial spraying, and we need them. The other thing we haven't really talked a whole lot about is that, I think Noel mentioned, the more we spray, the more likely it is that we are encouraging resistance to the pesticide among the mosquitoes. And I have here an article from the USDA from 2019 about, I'm sorry, insecticide resistance in Florida. They have a lot of mosquitoes in Florida. This was 2019 at the height of the Zika virus, and they found that among the populations of mosquitoes there that were already, had already become resistant to permethrin, they had to dose those mosquitoes with 60 times the dose to kill them. So that's, you know, that's not good. Okay? I think we can, I think we could all agree, that's not ideal. I do want to address a couple of public health topics. So I want to talk about West Nile virus again. I'm not a public health expert. These are just printouts from the CDC. So this is a map right here of the current outbreaks of West Nile virus in the United States right now. Year-to-date, actually, there are 140 cases in the United States. There are, have been reported so far, nine in North Dakota and five in Minnesota. Now, August is the month where you see the most West Nile cases. So that number will go up. But so far this year, we're talking about 140 people. I don't want to minimize the experience that people have with West Nile virus. It's not a disease that I want to get. But in terms of the likelihood of any one of us getting it, it's pretty small. So if we take a look at, I think, someone had already mentioned the, you know, the eight in 10, this is again CDC, got another CDC printout here. Eight in 10 people infected with West Nile virus do not develop any symptoms. One in five people who are infected will develop some symptoms, can be a fever, headache, joint pains, et cetera. One in 150 people who are infected will develop a severe illness. So there, you know, it's not, it's not nothing to get West Nile virus. It can cause some severe illness, but again, we have to look at the scale of it. A couple of people who emailed me mentioned they are concerned about asthma. They have asthma or their child has asthma, and they're worried that if we spray, if we aerial spray permethrin, they can't avoid it, and they don't want to have an asthma attack triggered because of the aerial spray. I looked up some information about asthma on the CDC website. Almost 25 million Americans have asthma, and every year about, well, I shouldn't say every year. Let's see, 2021, the year that's printed on this sheet, 2021, 3,517 people died of asthma. So if you compare that to in 2018, I looked at some historical West Nile virus data. 2018 had a lot of cases, and I was trying to look before COVID because COVID can kind of, you know, maybe someone died and they had COVID and/or West Nile. It's hard to say. So I looked at some years that were before COVID. 2018 had a lot of West Nile virus cases compared to the years right before and after. There were 2,646 cases of West Nile virus that year, and there were 167 deaths. Again, they're all tragic, and I don't want to get West Nile virus either, but if you just kind of compare that to another disease that we've seen recently, in 2021, there were 227 U.S. deaths from West Nile virus, and there were 460, 513 deaths from COVID. So we have to kind of think about how do we, what are the most effective ways that we can avoid West Nile virus without causing other harm, like, for example, triggering asthma attacks in people? So the last thing I want to talk about is just the response that I've heard from people. One of the places where I've seen a lot of comments has been mentioned is social media. I took a look at the, there was a post put up by the city, I think on Wednesday, announcing the aerial spray. You can see my little tally sheet here. On Saturday morning, these are the fun things I do on my weekend. I counted comments. I looked at just the top level, like first response, so not people's back-and-forth discussions, but someone replied directly to the post. So there were a total of 408 comments on that post. If you follow the city of Morehead social media, I think we have Kelly and Lisa here. I'm going to guess that's probably outside of the normal range of the number of comments that we get on Facebook. So of those 408 comments, not all of those were the top-level comments, but I counted the ones that had a pro or anti kind of message about spraying. 11 people commented that they were for spraying. 95 people commented at the top level that they were against spraying. So that is about 8.6 times the number of people commented that they were against it rather than for it. Since July 31st, not counting today, I got a couple more emails today, but I didn't count those in this count because I was at work. So since July 31st, I have received 18 emails from 14 different people regarding vector control and mosquitoes. One person was for aerial spraying, and 14 people were against. So some people sent more than one emails, but if you just count the number of people and not the number of emails, it's 1 for aerial spraying, 14 against. If you counted the number of emails, it would be, I think, 1 for and 18 against. I keep track of all of my phone calls and emails that I get from people in Morehead. I try really hard to do that. Since I started at the council in January, the most contact I've ever received on any one issue was four emails about a lift station. So before now, four emails was the high-water mark, and now we are up to, I think, 19 or 20 on one issue. Within those emails, people's primary concerns are for pollinators, but also for their own health and safety and that of their pets. They don't want to breathe in the permethrin spray. They don't want it on their kids' toys. They don't want it on their pet's skin and fur. As Councilmember Borgan said, we all have many ways to avoid mosquito bites besides aerial spraying, and we've heard that too tonight. There's lots of options that we all have to protect ourselves from mosquitoes. But if we move forward with aerial spraying, none of us has the ability to opt out of the pesticide being rained down on us from the sky. So these are just my conclusions tonight. The harm, I think, in indiscriminately killing pollinators does not outweigh the potential benefits of aerial spraying to reduce West Nile virus. West Nile virus is a serious but rare disease. We have many ways to avoid getting infected. I got an email today from Barbara, who lives in Morehead, and she suggests that we could do some better messaging around West Nile virus. I'm going to read just a small section of the email. People who live in Morehead could greatly benefit from targeted messaging during West Nile virus season, particularly the people who are most vulnerable to severe outcomes if they should become infected. These individuals are likely already under the care of medical professionals, so they should already know that they are in the higher-risk category. Most medical professionals today are conscientious about telling people this. But what if the city of Morehead did more to inform people and increase awareness? What if a communications plan was established to enhance the health and safety of people in Morehead during West Nile virus season? I can even imagine free West Nile virus kits being available at City Hall or the library or at public events that would include the appropriate mosquito repellent, tips for when to spend time outdoors, et cetera. There's a lot that could be done to help people through West Nile virus season. I think that's an excellent suggestion. It costs us, I believe, City Manager Molly, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's $36,000 for every aerial spray. Is that correct? So I went on the Shields website. You can get a can of 30% DEET for $8.99. I believe that's a six-ounce can. You can also get, if you don't like DEET, you can get a small bottle of lemon eucalyptus tick and insect repellent for $9.99. So even if we spent $15 per kit, we could buy and distribute 2,400 insect repellent kits to distribute throughout the city. And that would be for the cost of one aerial spray. So aerial spraying at this time is, in my opinion, literal overkill. Moreover, the people of Morehead who I have heard from have been very clear that you do not want your children, your pets, your lawns, and your gardens to be doused with aerial permethrin, and I think we should listen.
Thank you, Councilmember Borgan and Councilmember Mattson. Comments or anything else from Councilmember White? Councilmember White?
Thank you, Mayor. If you want to grab it, there's a handout in your packet with some data that I've been collecting. When I heard this was going to be on the agenda, I thought this might be a good time to share the data I've been collecting for the last couple of years. Some of you are probably going to say, Deb, you need more hobbies. But this is from, as the other council members know, we get regular reports from Cass County Vector Control on their trap count measures. And what I've been doing since 2022 is entering in a spreadsheet the average trap counts that they have broken down by four areas. It's Morehead, West Fargo, South Fargo, and North Fargo. And so I have all of that from 2022 to now, as well as some of the data from even going back to 2020. So I've got a pretty extensive amount of data looking at the, you know, the trap count information. And I also, you know, part of this, I'm definitely a data nerd. My PhD, one of my areas of specialization is in quantitative analysis. I've taught research methods and statistics for 35 years, so this is definitely in my wheelhouse. But also, for me, it is that as council members, I really think it's important that we are making evidence-based, data-driven decisions. And so if anytime we're going, if anytime we're investing city resources, we should be able to see that we are getting the intended outcome. And I think what the data shows is that's not the case. So one of the other interesting things with this is that we have set up really a nice quasi-experimental design because we have a control group, Morehead, that has not been spraying while they have been spraying on the other side of the river, so we can make some interesting comparisons to see how things change after spraying there compared to here when we haven't had it. So before I dive into it, first I just want to mention too that overall, one of the things that I caution people is to not look at individual numbers. So I hear sometimes people will say, well, I looked at the trap counts and Morehead was higher than the other communities, so clearly we need to be doing, we need to be spraying. And one of the things, I didn't, for brevity, I didn't bring all of the data, but you can see consistently across, if you look at individual events, if you look at mean trap counts by year, and accumulatively, cumulatively, over all of the years I've gathered data, that unfortunately, Morehead tends to have, whether we spray or don't spray, Morehead and North Fargo have higher amounts of mosquitoes than what they have in, for the average trap counts for South Fargo and West Fargo. And so it's kind of outside of my, you know, above my pay grade to speculate as to why, but it's probably because we have a higher concentration of older neighborhoods with more trees. I think about, I live near Concordia, and we've got an old cooley there with a lot of areas that just don't drain well. So the reality is whether we spray it or not, we're going to have higher mosquito counts in Morehead. So you can't really look at one incidence and see, well, Morehead's higher than other places. We're always higher. Same thing for North Fargo, too. They're typically always higher than the other two areas that have, that are much more open. And you think about, you know, all the new neighborhoods in West Fargo and South Fargo, they're more open, they have fewer trees, less of a mosquito breeding ground. So in order to get a better indicator of the effectiveness of spraying, what I did is I looked at for each of those areas, the changes between before and after the spraying occurred. So before spraying occurred in each of those, and say, North Fargo compared to after, and then also did the same thing, looking at the before and after numbers for Morehead. And you would think that if spraying was very effective, that you should consistently find that Morehead is worse off after aerial spraying than the other three areas that are spraying. And that's not what we see. And so that's where I want to direct you to the data that I have here. And I have two different tables here, and they're color-coded based on improvement after aerial spraying or change that we've seen after aerial spraying. Green being the most improvement, followed by yellow, orange, and then red being the least improvement. And the other thing that you can see, these are percent changes from, again, before and after spraying. If it's a positive number, that means that the trap count actually went up after spraying. And if it's a negative number, it means that it went down. And you might be a little surprised. I know I was to see so many positive numbers that, in many cases, the trap counts are higher after spraying. You could argue that maybe they would have gone up even higher, okay? But more importantly, it's just looking at that, comparing regions before and after spraying. So in the top table, I have in the day after, the immediate day after spraying, comparing the numbers. And what you can see is that, again, you know, in two of those instances, or in only one of those instances that I have on here, was Morehead worse off than the other three areas after spraying. And I actually didn't put it on here. I realized I'd skipped last week. But last week even, after spraying, North Fargo had a 500% increase in their trap count. Fargo, or South Fargo, West Fargo, they were better, and then Morehead was right in the middle. Okay? So again, for the four data points that I have for the day after spraying, in one case, we were the worst one, in three, we weren't. In one case, we were the second-best of the area. So certainly not very compelling evidence that it had that great of an effect, or the intended effect, the day after. In the chart below, I have the before and after going out a little bit further, because as you've heard, there's a residual effect. It may take time for the spraying to kick in. So if I picked data points from five to 12 days afterwards, I don't have a lot of control over what we get from Cass County, or Cass County Vector Control, and so I had to go with the distances they had. But even here, you can see that there isn't a consistent trend where you see Morehead doing, being worse off because we didn't spray compared to the other communities. So we had two instances where we were worse off compared to the other communities, one where we were second-best, one where we were right in the middle, or two where we were second-best, and one where we were right in the middle, if you look at the color coding. And one of the things I want to point out, for instance, is that if we look at the spraying that occurred this year in July, five days after spraying, we were the worst off compared to the other three regions. We had seen, but we'd actually seen a decrease in our trap count. So we saw a 25% decrease compared to anywhere from, well, you can see, there was a 58.75% decrease for South Fargo, 64% for North Fargo, and then West Fargo did the best. They saw a 78% increase. So at that point, five days out, we had seen the, we were in the, had the least change, least improvement in our numbers. However, just go another week after that, after we'd done truck spraying, and now we moved up to second-best. And so we got out there and we did the targeted hotspots with the truck spraying, and we actually moved ahead of both South Fargo and West Fargo. And we saw then an 87.76% decrease in our trap count from before that aerial spraying had occurred. And so again, nothing in here seems to indicate that we're seeing the results that we intended to have, that would seem to be intended from aerial spraying. And so I want to point out that again, because, again, if we're spending thousands and thousands of dollars on something, we should be able to have evidence to back it up that it's actually doing what it's supposed to do. I also, along the same, in that same vein, wanted to put into consideration the, one of the issues that's been brought up tonight, which is pesticide resistance. So the CDC has been raising alarms since 2023 about increased pesticide resistance among mosquitoes due to the overuse of mass spraying. So when they do the stuff that you use at home, doesn't increase resistance, it really is just that sort of mass spraying. Aerial spraying for nuisance mosquitoes, when there's not a public health crisis, will actually end up raising resistance and making pesticides less effective later, should we really need them. And so that's a concern that we should be taking seriously. The CDC, by contrast, recommends, first of all, regularly monitoring for pesticide resistance, which I don't know that Cass County Vector Control is doing that. We don't see any information from them about testing for pesticide resistance. They recommend applying locally to treat hotspots and only using area-wide treatments during public health outbreaks. And that's what we have been doing in Morehead with the truck spraying. They recommend less frequent applications, leaving generations, population segments, or areas untreated. And they also recommend establishing a higher threshold for mosquito mitigation with insecticides. So some of the things that, again, that we've already been talking about doing. The other thing that I've been thinking about is, again, we've talked about if there is a clear public health emergency or crisis, then we should be doing aerial spraying. Well, do we have a public health emergency right now in our community? As you've heard, according to Cass County Vector Control, Cass County human cases now include six with illnesses and two blood donors. None have been reported in Clay County, just in Cass County. As you know, most people who get West Nile are asymptomatic, and so we know that the numbers are certainly higher, but those people are also not at any elevated risk. We don't know, as far as I'm sure, I'm not, as far as I understand, we don't know if those eight people were even in the metro area. They were in Cass County, but Cass County is bigger than the state of Rhode Island. And so we could do aerial spraying every single day and not treat things that are happening outside of our metro where the spraying isn't occurring. And so it's important that we know whether or not those cases actually occurred in our area. And I'll just touch on, again, according to the CDC, as you've heard, the risk is relatively low. Only 0.67% of people, one out of 150 people infected, develop severe illness. Among those with a severe illness, the fatality rate is between 3 and 15%. In other words, that's between two one-hundredths of a percent to one-tenth of a percent of the people who contract West Nile virus die as a result of it. So as Councilmember Mattson pointed out, I mean, we should take this seriously, but we also shouldn't exaggerate the health risks of West Nile virus. And so I would just say, my preference would be implementing procedures to access better data on public health risk in the metro so that we can know if the cases are actually occurring here. Following CDC guidelines on preventing pesticide resistance, including treating hotspots with truck spray rather than the whole area, as recommended by the CDC. Focus more on public education about personal protection and prevention, particularly for high-risk groups such as elderly. And also put a moratorium on aerial spraying unless there is a clear and compelling evidence of a significant outbreak of West Nile in our metro. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember White. I also just wanted to clear up, too, that the pause of aerial spraying was not due to any request by a single council member. As was stated earlier, we don't make policy outside of this council meeting. The pause was due to the fact that we were not able to coordinate with the entity that was doing the aerial spraying in order to do it in the .0035 per acre that our policy states we will do, or at the time, we are policy states. So we weren't able to be able to follow our policy. We follow the policy. We don't go outside that because policy is made by this council during council meetings. So you can imagine the havoc that would create if just we had, you know, somebody say, don't follow the policy today, and now we'd want you to change this policy in a myriad of things, not just this. So that's how the process is. I guess at this point, hearing the majority of what is being discussed, I would be looking for a motion to pause the aerial spraying until the council can discuss at a further meeting whether or not to keep our current policy or to edit the current policy. This is not something that will be decided tonight. I don't want any motions for a policy to put forward tonight. That's not the best process to utilize, is something gets put on agenda on a Friday and we make a policy 48 hours later. That's not good governance. But if the council is interested in pausing until we can discuss in more depth at a future meeting, I would entertain that motion.
I move to put a moratorium on our current aerial spraying policy until we have the opportunity to revisit our policy at a later date.
Is there a second?
Second, Mattson.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'd just like to have a little more discussion with council before we vote on this. We just, Mayor, you just talked about not formulating a new policy or discussion in the short timeframe. So I think we have a policy that's been in place for several years that we've been following. We should keep that in place while we go back to the workshop that Councilmember Borgan was talking about and work that through our discussions, and then come forward to a council meeting in the future, whenever that is. But I think we can keep our current policy in place, in my opinion, and then have those discussions instead of placing a hold on the short notice with all the, I mean, I have comments about all the stuff, too, and the comments about the West Nile and the public health, but there's also nuisance issues and, you know, the other public health concerns than just West Nile. And we had residents talk about having to get antibiotics for getting mosquito bites. Okay? We don't, you know, people build resistance to antibiotics as well. So, I mean, we could go on and on and on tonight about the discussion, right? But I think we can hammer out a lot of that discussion in a workshop, just keep our current policy, and then work out the, work out the discussion, and then come back with what we think as a council at a further meeting. But I don't think we should change that tonight based on the information.
Any other council have a discussion? Councilmember Hendrickson?
Thank you, Mayor Carlson. I agree with Councilmember Nelson. I was like, we need to pause it. I'm up for re-discussing it. But whatever Ryan said, I mean, you know, we can hammer this out with the next workshop, hopefully, and I think it would have been rather there, too, Cass County Vector Control Director. So I agree with Ryan. I'm going to vote against that pausing. Thanks.
Councilmember Mattson?
So this policy, I believe, was developed in 2021, and I believe that Councilmember White cited some CDC research from 2023 about increasing insecticide resistance in mosquitoes. So, you know, things have changed since this policy was enacted. We've learned more, and things are different now than they were then, and I don't, I don't think we should discount that part either.
Councilmember Borgan?
I'm looking for clarification from Councilmember Niesemeyer. When you said a moratorium on, what are you talking about? Is that just a pause on this aerial spraying and keeping the rest of the policy in place as it is?
Correct. I believe similarly to many of the things that Councilmember White had said about having evidence-based practice, also you and Councilmember Mattson had brought up a number of issues that were highlighted by residents but backed up by research and data. And I think what's really important to consider is that we're not going to solve the mosquito issue with one practice. I think we need to look at a multi-pronged approach, and I believe some of our residents specifically cited the good work that we do with trapping larvae. But it's not enough. And so I think revisiting it and looking at other methods, perhaps alternative, to aerial spraying. I sincerely appreciated you noting how we have the option for people to opt out of truck spraying, but nobody can opt out of aerial spraying. And so for me, that, as a diabetic, as a person who suffers from asthma, I fit into lots of these categories. And still, I'm really concerned about choice and people being able to make choices for their business, for their home, and for their neighborhoods. So I really think that it's just stopping the aerial spraying part of our policy so we can revisit the policy as a whole. But we are But we are currently in the season where we may need some hotspot truck spraying. And so that is why I did not include that in my motion. But thank you for the clarification, Councilmember Borgan.
So I'm going to ask if you would take a friendly amendment to your motion in that we call it a pause? Because when you say moratorium, it sounds like the decision has been made and we could never go back to it. So I think if we say we're going to pause aerial spraying until we have a time to have a workshop and get more information, which I think we can do fairly quickly, right, Mr. Molly?
Yes. The next workshop is August 19th, next Tuesday, a week from Tuesday.
Okay. So I think if you would take that friendly amendment, it might satisfy Mr. Nelson. I'm not sure. But at least we're not saying we're canceling it forever because I'm not comfortable with that. I need more information.
I agree. We do need more information. And I think looking at new data that we have, there were some comments about having our AAA CQMLP, I can't remember the letters of the committee, revisit it. I mean, I think there were so many ideas that came out of this community engagement that we really have an opportunity here. And so if moratorium can be replaced with pause, Kelly, I would appreciate that in my motion.
So with the pause, we don't need a second or because of friendly amendment? And she agreed. Okay, all right. Any further discussion?
I have a few things to say. All right, so most of my life, I've been accused of being a tree hugger. I have my degree in environmental policy. I have a pollinator garden, and I did the lawns, the legumes grant, and have pollinator gardens going on. So I love the birds. I love the bees. I love the butterflies. I'm all about it. I'm not gonna... I don't know. I think that this is alarming and it's concerning. There is science behind this on both sides. So I just need to speak to that for a moment because I feel like in a couple of places here, I saw people not fully go into information that we have. So, for instance, the CDC does say that one out of 150 people develop a serious illness. It also states that it's fatal. So to leave that part out is alarming. So we're looking at possible fatalities, just to put that out there. There is also no vaccine for West Nile. There is no medical, like, no medicine to treat West Nile. Okay. So on Friday, we all received the same email from Cass County Vector Control. The last sentence of that email was, "They anticipate more cases, hospitalizations, and likely a fatality given the trajectory we are on." So my concern is that this matrix was developed by PhD-level scientists that care deeply about our ecosystems. And they did it by trying to protect the environment as much as they possibly could. They did it by cutting permethrin by 50%. They dictated that spray would occur after sundown when our pollinators would be most protected from impacts of permethrin. I'm choosing to put my trust in the PhD scientists that developed this matrix and developed this policy. I don't have a PhD in this. I think this is one of the toughest decisions. And when we face really tough decisions, that we believe science. We believe data, and we believe the experts. They put this matrix together, and we have relied on it. I can't, personally, I can't stomach a death in our community because we failed to take action and protect human health and safety.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Hendrickson.
I ask, when we take the vote, we do a roll call vote, please.
Okay. Councilmember Moore. Councilmember White.
Thank you. I just wanted to respond to Councilmember Moore. And I want to tell you, I feel the same way. And so I wanted just to say, and this is when I say we need good data-driven decisions. We, I don't want to underestimate the importance of protecting public health. But I also don't want to exaggerate. And that's where, and my concern was that some of the data that we're getting, like, the statement that you read is not backed up. So saying that we anticipate someone to die in the next few weeks with the rates that we have, the data doesn't back that up. And I don't, that's not coming from the folks that were on the committee. And so I also don't want fear mongering. So but I think what I, what I see the pause as the opportunity, like, even, even, I understand for some of you that are newly elected, you weren't here when we developed the policy. But I was here, and I would say, even as we look at it now, I had questions that just didn't occur to me at the time. Like, how do we operationalize public health risk? And what does it mean? And that was where, you know, those questions about, is it people that are sick in our area? Or is it people that are sick, you know, miles and miles and miles away? So it's more of having that conversation. I can tell you right now, I would not be in favor of a complete ban, of closing the door completely. But I think being clear about what it means, what is clearly a public health risk. And so I would appreciate the opportunity to have that conversation about really, what is that threshold where we know we need to be protecting the public? And so for me, that was, that pause would give us that chance to look at that more thoroughly because I felt like there were things that I hadn't thought about before until we sort of... This is the first time that we've come this close since we developed the policy, you know? And so there were things that came up that I hadn't thought about earlier on. But otherwise, I just wanted you to know that, that I do think, obviously, we need to really be taking seriously the public health risk, but just getting more nuanced idea of how we measure that. So thank you.
Any other discussion? We've been talking about this for an hour and a half, I think. So there is a motion and a second on the table, and a request has been made that we do a roll call vote. So with that, could we get a roll call vote, please?
Ryan Nelson?
Sorry, no.
Nicole Mattson?
Yes.
Heather Niesemeyer?
Yes.
Emily Moore?
No.
Deb White?
Yes.
Lisa Borgan?
Yes.
Sebastian McDougall?
No.
Chuck Hendrickson?
No.
Okay, and that is a four-to-four vote. So I never get to vote, except for when it's these really super fun tie votes. And because I'm looking at the weather ahead, and I know that we cannot aerial spray when it's potentially raining, and our next workshop is in seven days, I will be requesting that this is a discussion that will be taken up at the next workshop. And so I will be voting to pause for one week. And hopefully, we can resolve this at the workshop and bring it to the next council meeting as far as if there's going to be a change or if we're keeping it. If we're keeping it, obviously, we wouldn't be bringing it to the next council meeting because we already have a policy in place that took over a year and a half to put together. So we will pause it for one week. And with that, Morehead, we are adjourned.